I'm going to call the meeting to order. We begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Can I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Harper-Petersen. Commissioner Gutierrez is absent this evening.
Is he excused?
He is excused. Commissioner Bergman.
Present.
Vice Chair Bradley.
Here.
Chair Silverman.
Present. So the next item on the agenda is public comment. This public comment period is intended to cover comment that is not related to an agenda item. The Commission may briefly respond to statements made or questions posed as allowed by the Brown Act. However, the Commission's general policy is to refer items to staff for attention or have a matter placed on a future Commission agenda for a more comprehensive action or report. Is there anyone here who would like to speak on an item that is not on the agenda? Seeing none, the next item is the minutes. Does anyone have any changes to the minutes?
I don't have any changes.
Nope.
Mr. Bradley, is there a motion to approve?
I'm moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
I will acknowledge Angela.
Oh, thanks.
Even though I think she might have been like a tad bit slow.
And missed it.
Nothing on Shannon, but I wanted to, you know, make sure that Angela was recognized. Can I have a vote, please?
Commissioner Harper-Petersen?
Yes.
Commissioner Bergman?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bradley?
Yes.
Chair Silverman?
Yes. Next up is a public hearing. I'll briefly read the, well, actually, it's not brief. I'm just going to read the procedure for public hearing. Staff will present a report on the history, physical features, et cetera, on the application, followed with staff's recommendations. The applicant may make a presentation thereafter. Interested members of the community may speak on their proposal. When all interested parties have had an opportunity to be heard, the hearing will be closed and no further discussion from the floor can be held. The Commission will then consider the evidence and make its recommendation. If you challenge a public hearing item in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing described in this notice, the public noticed, or in written correspondence delivered to the city at or prior to the public hearing. Speakers should fill out a speaker's form found by the door and hand it to the recording secretary prior to addressing the Commission. The speaker should come up to the microphone to speak since the meeting is being recorded. This will assist staff in preparing the minutes. We have one public hearing item today. It relates to 930 Britton Avenue, APN 046-162-050. I'm guessing by your position that there is a staff presentation.
There is, thank you.
All right. Would you like to provide it?
I would, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Chair Silverman, Commissioners. My name is Andrea Martisich, Associate Planner. The item before you this evening is a proposal for 930 Britton Avenue. There are three actions this evening before the Commission. The first is for design review approval for, in addition to an existing commercial industrial building. The second is a minor use permit request for off-site parking, and that would be an off-site parking agreement with 1030 Britton Avenue. And third is an approval of a transportation demand management or TDM plan. The project site is located at 930 Britton Avenue, as well as a portion of 1030 Britton. On this slide, you can see 930 Britton outlined in red, while the portion of 1030 Britton is outlined in yellow. Both properties are under the same ownership. The existing building at 930 Britton Avenue is vacant, and Polkus Creek is located at the rear of the lot. The entire site area is approximately 56,000 square feet. The site is currently developed with parking, the building itself, and some landscaping, with the exception of the actual creek itself. One thing I wanted to point out on this slide, you can see 990 Industrial located to the right of the project site. The reason I wanted to point this out is in 2006, the property owner of 990 Industrial and 930 Britton entered into a private shared parking agreement, as well as ingress and egress agreements. As a result, 930 Britton provides 10 parking spaces, shared parking, to 990 Industrial. So through the report this evening, when I talk about parking, I wanted to point out that we are not counting those 10 spaces within any of the numbers. So we're basically ignoring them for purposes of parking calculations this evening to be more conservative, but I did want to point out that existing agreement.
So the 57 spots do not include those 10?
Correct, they do not include the 10.
All right.
The general plan designation for the site is general commercial industrial, and the zoning designation is GCI, also general commercial industrial. This designation allows for flexible uses such as retail service, office, research and development, and industrial. And the intent is to allow the maximum flexibility, to allow the market to determine the best mixture of non-residential uses. Surrounding uses in the area are industrial, commercial, and a planned development site across Britton Avenue. The applicant is proposing to demolish a portion of the existing building, approximately 4,000 square feet, and on this slide, I've outlined in red the portion of the building that's proposed to be demolished. The proposal is to replace this with a new three-story addition, approximately 14,000 square feet. This is a photograph of the portion to be removed, so it's that shorter portion that's mostly glass. The building further down is proposed to remain, and I have a close-up view of that. So that warehouse space is proposed to remain and be renovated. The proposed use for the site is laboratory and R&amp;D, which will be used by a biotech incubator company that provides office and laboratory space to research and development businesses. This would include several individual companies housed within the building, although the building itself and the leases will be managed by QB3. And the applicant will speak a little bit more to the business model. As I mentioned before, parking for the proposed use would be onsite as well as at 1030 Britton. On this screen, you'll see the area outlined in yellow is the 1030 Britton portion of the site. And I wanted to point out that even though there are two separate lots and parcels, the site design was really done with an eye to keeping it as one unified parcel. So you can see with the landscaping improvements, site improvements, and parking improvements, in person, it will appear as one unified site. There are 10 trees proposed for removal, however, none of them require a permit due to the size and species. And as I mentioned before, there is a creek to the rear. Within the existing 25-foot setback, which you're aware of, from the top of bank, there's existing parking, landscaping, and lighting. The applicant will not be doing any new development within that setback, so everything that is there is proposed to remain. All new development will, of course, meet the 25-foot setback, thereby complying with the creek setback standards. In terms of landscaping, this is actually taken from Sheet 0101 of your plans, so it's the landscaping plans provided. The proposed landscaping will total about 8,000 square feet. For the site, this is an increase of about 6,000 square feet from existing conditions. The applicant is proposing a total of 26 new trees, and again, showing how the landscaping is spread throughout the site to create a more cohesive project. So in terms of the first entitlement for design review, just to review quickly the development standards, the height of the proposed project is 50 feet at the highest point, and that is at that tower element, which is where the elevator is. That is the maximum height allowed for the district. The proposal meets all setbacks and has a proposed FAR of .55. 2.0 is the maximum allowed within the district. The total square footage, if approved, would be 26,561 square feet. The proposal meets all interesting requirements and provides an additional pedestrian walkway along Britton Avenue. The proposed design is contemporary and utilizes a variety of materials to visually break up the massing of the building, as well as add architectural interest. A variety of colors and materials are proposed to help break up the massing. And then I'm going to show a few renderings, however, the architect will also be speaking to the design, so I'm not going to talk as much about the design as I will the findings for design review approval. So within your packet on pages 14 to 15 are the findings for design review approval, and I'm just going to briefly go over those. So the scope of design review involves a review of the overall design, architectural design and landscaping. Staff finds that the proposal meets the findings because the proposal meets applicable zoning standards, meets and exceeds landscaping and parking, and utilizes materials that are internally consistent and support the proposed architecture. In addition, staff finds that the proposed landscaping unifies the site and provides attractive features both for the site and for the neighboring areas. I'm going to go over the parking requirements. There's a comprehensive table in your packet on packet page 11, and this is a summary of that. However, I'd be happy to go into more detail if you'd like. So as part of the proposal, the municipal code allows a 20% reduction to be taken for any projects within a quarter-mile of transit, of regularly scheduled transit. In this case, the project is within a quarter-mile of a bus stop at El Camino in Britton, and the bus route is the El Camino Bus, which it stops every 15 minutes. So it is a regular stop and regular transit within the quarter-mile distance. Utilizing that reduction, the proposed parking, or the required parking, I should say, is 46 spaces for the project. The applicant is providing 57 spaces, which, as you asked before, Chair Silverman, does exclude those 10 parking spaces shared with 990 Industrial, and includes 36 spaces from 1030 Britton, which requires a minor use permit. The site is also providing six short-term and six long-term bicycle spaces. Let me actually go back one. So with the minor use permit, if approved, the total space is 7, where 46 are required, which also include five motorcycle spaces and six carpool-vanpool spaces. The second entitlement before you this evening is for the minor use permit for the off-site parking, and this is for the 36 spaces located immediately adjacent to 930 Britton. As I mentioned before, the site is under the same ownership as 930 Britton. On this slide, you'll see the entirety of 1030 Britton outlined in red, with the portion proposed for the minor use permit in yellow. The 36 parking spaces would be dedicated exclusively to 930 Britton Avenue. And in order to approve the minor use permit, there are several findings and criteria that must be met. These are outlined in detail within your packet on pages 9 to 11. And as explained in the packet, these findings have been integrated as part of the conditions of approval. The applicant has proposed a TDM plan, transportation demand management plan, as required by the municipal code. This is included as Attachment 5 within your packet. The municipal code requires TDM as a way to reduce traffic and promote alternative transportation. The key TDM measures include a Caltrain go-pass for employees, a bike-share program, and that would be a dockless bike-share program, so basically not having specific docking stations for bikes. Clients can use an app to find them, and this sponsor will pay for transportation to and from Caltrain, as well as invite the dockless companies to drop off bikes onsite. As we mentioned before, long-term and short-term bicycle parking, carpool and vanpool parking, and, excuse me, participation in a future transportation management association. I wanted to point out some of the conditions related to TDM, which are on page 20 of your packet. Based on the nature of the proposal as an incubator, meaning occupancy could vary because they're individual businesses, staff added a condition of approval. It starts at condition number eight, for your consideration. That would require TDM implementation to begin when the building reaches 80% occupancy. Once the monitoring of the plan begins, the city can require changes to the TDM plan if the trip reduction target is not met. Additionally, the developer can utilize different measures over time to address market conditions and respond to employee and tenant needs. The future changes and report of their effectiveness would be included in the annual monitoring reports. So going back to their specific TDM plan, Section 4 outlines some monitoring requirements. Those would include AM and PM commute hour driveway counts, annual employee surveys, and an annual report to the city. If trip reduction targets are not met, the city can require the developer or future tenants to utilize different measures over time to meet those requirements. These future changes would have to be included within the monitoring reports. And going back to the TMA, I wanted to clarify one thing. So within, there's not currently an employee shuttle within that area of the city. So this requirement would require the project sponsor to financially contribute to a TMA if one is established in that district, based on a measure, a fair measure, like square footage or something like that. So once there's enough employees within that area as part of different businesses, all the different businesses would contribute to a shuttle to get employees to the Caltrain station.
Where's that requirement found?
That is...
I mean, I see the reference to, in the TDM plan on page 12, it does say, "At the time the shuttle service becomes operational, the landlord or property manager of this project site would be required to participate in the TMA and through membership fees help fund the cost of the shuttle." But where is the requirement with respect to the proportionality and that sort of thing?
I mean, I see the condition under condition 10, but yeah, I see it.
Is it in condition 10?
It is, but the proportionality isn't specified in there, but I guess it's probably not specified anyway at this point, right?
It's not, because we don't yet know all the businesses that would be participating. And like, I mentioned, we want to make sure it's equitable. So, you know, in terms of employment setters in the area, kind of guessing this one's going to be on the smaller end of some of the larger employers that come into the area, so we wouldn't want to set a specific number for them until we know everyone who would be participating. But it would be based on something like square footage or usage, and it would be something that, once it's established, would be done in conjunction with all the employers that are participating, as Community Development Department.
So this 80% threshold, which is reflected by conditions eight or nine, that's to the benefit of the developer, right? I mean, I just don't remember us, I guess I think I understand the thought process, which is that the purpose of the TDM is to decrease by 20% the amount of trips, and so the idea would be that you don't need the TDM when occupancy is below 80%. But that kind of presupposes an assumption of 100% occupancy.
It does, and you're correct.
And it's new, so why, I mean, I'm assuming the developer asked for that, but why did we agree?
They actually didn't. That was something that staff came up with based on the unique nature of the business. I think for a lot of the TDM plans that have come through before, they've been single tenants and assumed 100% occupancy, or pretty close to upon initial occupancy. With this one, because it's individual businesses and it's really one company that's managing all of that, we had less of an idea of when occupancy might, when full occupancy or close to full occupancy might actually occur. And, you know, maybe that's something, I'm not sure if that answers...
It seems like an awful lot of work for staff and potential for confusion. I mean, like, I mean, I imagine that occupancy is defined somewhere, but they're going to have, like, you know, various different tenants who might have a different number of employees, you know, based on the nature of their operations and like, I guess if there was just a 1-80% trigger, but then it seems like, you know, 9 could potentially kick in at random times, and who's going to be monitoring that? And, I don't know, it just, it seems like, it seems like a nice gesture for the city, but if the developer didn't ask for it...
And that's something that was put in there for your consideration, so it's not, the TDM stands alone. So that was something, like I said, we put in based on the nature of the business, but the TDM plan would function with or without that. And maybe our senior planner might have more to add, or?
Yeah, through the chair, I think, just to kind of flesh it out a little bit in terms of what our thinking was at a staff level. I think Andrea's made some important points in terms of we haven't processed an incubator use before, and so we wanted to be sensitive to when they would come to full occupancy and how to phase in a TDM plan appropriately, especially for a small site that kind of barely triggers our TDM requirement, which is fairly hard to meet, I think, for small businesses compared to some of the larger businesses you've reviewed before. Our thought here is that they would basically comply with these conditions the same way they would as if they were monitoring their TDM plan. So annually, they would have to supply their monitoring materials to us. And so we tried to word this in such a way that they would provide us those materials and say, "This year, we're below 80% occupancy, so with your approval, we're not going to do the full monitoring." Or if they're above 80% occupancy, then they would do the full monitoring as indicated in their TDM plan. So that was where staff was coming from and how we thought we would implement it and why we thought it would not be considerably more work than what staff would normally undertake to monitor a TDM plan.
Is the intention, so, here's a hypothetical, so they reach whatever this mythical 80% is in year two. TDM kicks in, they have to be providing transit passes for all of their employees. Then in year seven, you know, their occupancy is down to 60%. Clearly, under 9, they could request a waiver of the reporting requirement, but can they also stop providing transit passes to their employees?
I think that's an excellent question. The way that we intended it, and certainly it open to your feedback and thoughts, is that the years that they were under 80% occupancy, there's that sort of implied reduction in trips below their ITE numbers because they're not at full occupancy, so they would not have to do TDM. But I think that that's a fair question and an excellent one, and one that we kind of were looking forward, maybe into the future, to see how the neighborhood, you know what I mean, might change and how their incubator use might work.
I mean, I think, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I think somewhere I read in there that it says that the actual passes are supposed to be for the life of the project. I read somewhere in here, I forget where.
It's in the TDM, and it's in the report, but that would only be if the TDM plan was actually required.
Right, if there's a softening of the TDM, if they don't make the 80%.
I mean, I think I'm probably concerned about a theoretical problem, but like, the idea that you would offer people a transit pass and then be like, "Oh, we were at 78% this year, sorry." That sounds horrible.
I think that's a fair point. So what I would recommend to the Commission is maybe if we could kind of move through the remainder of the staff presentation and then hear a little bit from the applicant. We've got a couple of different options on how to handle this. So we may want to amend a condition of approval. If the Planning Commission, in order to make those findings for implementation of TDM and monitoring, would like to see that TDM plan carried forward. Once 80% occupancy is achieved, then it would go into effect, and if they were seeking a revision to their TDM plan, they would come back first to staff, and the Community Development Director would determine whether that was a significant change to the TDM plan, and if it was significant, we would bring it back to the Planning Commission for review. So maybe we can fine-tune the wording around some of those issues. So let staff kind of take a pass at that and look at that wording and see if we can clean that up for you as we're talking about some of the other issues tonight, or other aspects of the project tonight.
All right.
Okay, in terms of general plan consistency, this is outlined on pages 13 to 14 of your packet. So the policies are outlined in detail on pages 13 and 14 of your packet. To summarize them here, we do believe that the project is consistent with the general plan. It meets various policies related to land use, economic development, transportation, landscaping, and design goals, and encourages public and alternative modes of transportation. To give some background on the environmental review of the project, the scope was evolving pretty early on, and in the beginning was really focused on what was occurring within that creek setback. We had some really good discussions with the applicant and utilized the general plan policies as guidance to come up with a recommendation that within that 25-foot creek setback, the applicant leave everything as is existing, and they were agreeable to that. So once we determined that, planning staff contracted with an outside environmental consulting firm for review. They conducted analysis under, excuse me, including all topic areas under CEQA, the California Environmental Quality Act, including transportation. The conclusions of that analysis are included in the notice of exemption, which is Attachment 4 in your packet. And that notice of exemption concluded that the project was exempt under two classes, Class 1, existing facilities, and Class 2, infill development projects. And we do have both our environmental consultant from Placeworks and W. Trans here to answer any questions you might have about those technical studies. In terms of outreach, the applicant did a presentation to EDAC, our Economic Development Advisory Committee, who were excited to hear about the project and did have a few clarification questions. They also conducted outreach with two owners within a 300-foot radius, and the city did our standard notification of mailing and publishing in a newspaper. As a result of the applicant outreach, as well as the city outreach, we have not heard from any interested party. from any interested parties or received any questions or inquiries about the project. Before I go into the final motion, I did want to point out on page 21 of your packet, which is the code compliance certificate, we are recommending a slight change or addition to one of the conditions of approval. So, on condition 21, where it talks about recordation of CCNRs or other legal documents, so in this case, it would be the minor use permit for the shared parking agreement. At the very end of it, we would like to add prior to certificate of occupancy, just to trigger a time for when that should happen. And that tracks with the minor use permit approval on page 26, condition number six, which also requires the written offsite agreement to be recorded prior to certificate of occupancy. This is the motion, should you wish to approve this item. The applicant would also like to make a brief presentation when I'm done. I'm available for any questions, and we also have Steve Noack from Placeworks and Mark Spencer from W Trans here to answer any technical questions about our environmental review. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions, the staff, at this time?
You know, I just have one additional question about EDAC. You mentioned, and the report mentions that they were excited, and I want to say the report had one clarification that they asked about. Do you have any information on what, whether, whether EDAC had any concerns about the project or, or what they said, or if they made any suggestions about conditions or changes?
They didn't. So, I was at the meeting. They asked clarification questions about how the parking would work. There was also a member of the public layer who's the head of the Chamber of Commerce. So, he asked, asked general questions. And the presentation demonstrated the architecture, but also really spoke to the business model itself. So, it was a little bit more focused on that, although they did see the design in site plan and things like that. But it was really just clarification about the parking, no specific recommendations.
Okay. Thank you.
So, I'm going to be a little difficult, and I apologize. I know it's not out of, out of my character. So, when you look at the parking reduction under 18.20.050, it says that if any portion of the lot is located within one quarter mile of a transit stop with regular scheduled service during the weekday, how's that quarter mile supposed to be measured?
So, this one is measured, I actually have a map. So, this one is measured off all boundaries of the site. So, we do have code sections regarding other measurements where it actually talks about, like the walking distance. This one specifically, and let me get to it. Says if any portion of the lot is located within one quarter of my, of a mile of, of a transit stop. So, in this case, you can see the, the subject site is the darker pink color, and I don't really have a way to do the laser, but the, the, the radius circle goes across El Camino, and that transits, that transit stop is right at the corner of Britton and El Camino. So, it is within that circle, and it is measured as a radius from the boundaries of the site.
All right. I mean, I'll make a general observation that I'm just speaking for myself. Yeah, I think it's unrealistic to believe that a large portion of these scientists are going to hop on the bus a quarter mile, or according to Google Maps, .3 miles walk from that building. You know, the, the ordinance code says what, the municipal code says what it says. But, you know, just again, speaking for myself, considering how this planning commission feels about reducing parking requirements, I would ask that staff, you know, at some point, agendize whether or not we should modify this requirement, either require that it be a quarter mile from Caltrain, or modify the way that we calculate the distance from the stop in some way. But that's, again, just my own personal request, and I recognize that the, the municipal code says what it says. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, I understand that the applicant has a brief presentation?
Good evening, commissioners. My name's Ryan Gabar and I'm the project applicant. You know, I'm here in front of you tonight to talk a little about 9:30 Britton. First, obviously, we're here to talk about the design aspect of the building. And, you know, most notably, we've worked with MBH Architects on this design. We've been working on this design for about a year and a half and been working with city staff for about a year of that year and a half to kind of refine the project to what you see in front of you today. MBH has done all of our architecture for probably the past 20 years, and I can tell you that their attention to detail is something that I really marvel at, and I'm really proud, and I'm proud of the building that they've put in front of you tonight. As an example, when I was sitting with Andrea and meeting with her about four months ago, Andreas Krecke, who couldn't be here tonight, who runs their design studio, spent about five minutes talking about why the apple white color that was on this building had the right depth of white to really stand out. And, you know, I mean, it was about a five-minute conversation about the color white and why this color white was the best color white. And I think that kind of speaks to the level of detail that the architects have gone into on this project to, to make it what it is. So, I will introduce Kevin in a second and let him talk about the architecture of the project. Of course, the other part of this project is the use that's going on inside the building. We are proposing to put in here a life science incubator. We own and operate a life science incubator in San Francisco that has been open for about four years. And there's some really cool stuff that goes on in there. These are scientists that get the option to lease kind of one bench or one cube or one office at a time. And what it does is it gives access to these scientists that otherwise wouldn't have access to do the work that they do. So, when you break it down into such a small piece, it really ends up making the science much more affordable and not a major part of having to go raise capital to go out and lease a 5,000-square-foot space just to try out an idea. Here, you can come in here with one or two people on a credit card and try out your idea and see if there's, there's some links to it. So, that's kind of just the tip of the iceberg in terms of what goes on here. There is a whole lot of opportunity for vertical integration of, you know, purchasing. For example, when you buy pipettes, you have to buy a thousand pipette, pipette, pipette heads. And in this case, the, you know, we can buy the thousand and transfer that unit cost on to the company that only needs 10 or five or whatever it is. And we've got other great things that we can leverage, too. We get autoclaves that can clean the glassware to a certain specification. An autoclave costs $100,000. And if you're a two-person company, you're not going to buy an autoclave for your facility if you can go find one. But here, we've got an autoclave and we've got somebody that manages and runs that autoclave. So, you're just paying a unit cost to go ahead and get your glassware cleaned. So, you really see this up and down the board in this, in this incubator that it allows science and discoveries to be made that otherwise don't happen. And I think that's pretty cool and it's something I'm pretty proud to be a part of. So, I can certainly answer any questions, but I'll let Kevin come up and talk a little about the architecture, and then we can go from there.
Before you go, I'm sorry, Kevin. So, how, how many, at full capacity, how many folks do you think are going to be working in the lab space?
In the lab space itself? Or in the, or in the entirety of the building?
Okay, if it's easier, in the entirety of the building?
I'd say there's probably going to be between 50 and 70 people in the building.
Based on your San Francisco experience?
Yeah, based on my San Francisco experience.
And that's with 100% occupancy, or?
Probably 100% occupancy. It varies, and so, I, you know, I can't say that with 100% certainty at all times. And it also varies in terms of what the daily use of the building is. If you've got a three-person team, one of them might be offsite in a meeting in San Francisco, one of them's going to be somewhere else, you know, raising capital in New York or wherever they're going to be. But we find that we never have 100% of the companies there 100% of the time.
What's the, what's the most number of people you could foresee being at the space at any given time, the most?
I have a really tough time being able to give you an honest answer about that, other than the numbers that I just shared with you. I mean, I, you know, I just don't have the data.
Okay. Thank you.
Good evening, commissioners. Thank you for considering this project. So, as Ryan was mentioning, my name's Kevin. We're with MBH Architects. We have the pleasure of working on this building. And as has been mentioned, the existing site has three warehouse buildings and a small office building, with the small office building scheduled for removal. And the existing office buildings are getting a little long in the tooth. The outside is starting to weather, and so, as part of this, this addition, we're proposing to rehabilitate the entire site and the buildings. We really wanted the facade of the building to reflect the excitement that the interior has. There's a lot of energy to this program that QB3 runs, and we wanted that dynamism to come through in the architecture. And so, we are proposing a building that has some shifts to it. It's articulated and it breaks down the mass with the windows moving across the facade in different patterns and pops of color throughout the facade, as well as physical articulation of the building. There will be all-new windows that are deeply recessed and give some depth to that facade. We also wanted to bring the building to the human scale, and so, the warehouses will get a new skin in front of them, but will be front-facing towards the street and will have a good deal of glass looking into the laboratory. Looking at the San Francisco use that this same company has, it's really exciting to be able to see into these lab spaces and get a sense of the work that's going on there. And they're doing really interesting and exciting things, and being able to have that sort of connection to the community through transparency is important to us. All of the new materials will be high-quality materials, smooth, trued cement plaster, composite aluminum panels. There will be porcelain tile that has a wood effect. We considered wood initially, but due to maintenance concerns, we think that the tile will actually hold up much better, give us a longer-lasting, beautiful facade. And decorative metal elements that serve as the parapet, as well as the mechanical screens for the building. We're also going to revitalize the landscape in front of the building. There's just shy of 30 feet between the gutter and the building face, and that will include some new sidewalk and new planting. Should have been flipping through slides instead of just talking. I, I got it to go, yeah. So, this is a view from the warehouse corner. As you can see, the warehouses will be, will receive a completely new skin along them, and it'll be the same materials that are in the three-story office building, tying the two buildings together. And new awnings will give a sense of scale to the warehouses, as well as reach out and integrate a little bit more with that street scape. I'm hitting the wrong direction, I think. The building is proportionate to the buildings in the area and all within the zoning ordinances for height and bulk. And this is a view down the street, more towards Old County Road, towards the building. So, the, the main entry will be at the new office building. It is on the furthest right in this plan that you're looking at. And the, the new three-story structure will be devoted to office space and common use space. The most exciting space in the building is the all-hand space in the middle warehouse that will have a private patio space as well. This use, QB3 does a lot of lecture series and has events that are really interesting events. They, they tread a lot on, on innovation, and it's exciting to see these, these sorts of talks happen. The labs will be spread throughout the existing warehouses. You can see them wrapping along the south and along the west side of the lot. And parking, then, as Andrea was mentioning, is along the backside of the site, as well as on the adjoining parcel to the west.
Thanks. Does anyone have any questions for the architect at this time?
Yeah, I have a few. I don't know if you're by person or not, but on the landscaping, I'm looking at the packet that's on L1.01. And if you look at the front, if I'm looking at it right, because it says Britton Avenue, there's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. But the first slide that you showed, I don't think showed the trees coming as far east as, as this document has the actual plan to show. And there's nothing on there, but I assume that's just for rendering purposes. See how this, this whole front of the building shows here that there's no trees? But if you look at L1.01, it looks like there's more trees, which is good, that's what I'm...
I'm sorry, the, that particular image?
Well, if you look at, well, this, no, what you're showing right now is one rendering, but if you look at our plans, there are like seven going across there, and it looks like they're coming almost to the end of where this building is. So, I'm wondering what's, I mean, we're going to go by the plans, which means these, these trees would extend a little bit further in front of the building, right?
I think that might be the nature of the view.
Okay, that's fine, but I just want to make sure because...
The plans are correct, yes.
Okay, all right, that's good. The other thing is, and this might not be yours either, but I don't see anything with, are there any plans for electric charging stations?
Yes, there are, and, yeah.
Okay, I didn't, I wasn't sure of that. Yeah, I don't know if people are aware of it, but GM committed to going all off diesel on October 2nd. And in 2018, they have two electronic, electric vehicles coming, and then by 2023, they'll have 18 more. So, I think as a city, we might want to look at that as far as our zoning, because if we have like GMs doing 18 more electric vehicles in the next five years, I think that's going to change our requirements. So, go ahead.
So, I'd say one of the things that we're actually going to do with this facility, and we did this up in, in 953 with respect to, we cover the entire roofs above the lab with solar. And on this building, we're actually not going to use a diesel generator. Instead, we're going to use the Tesla batteries to back up to be our e-power, which is kind of cool.
Nice, yeah, that's nice. And then the last thing, and this is, this is just personal, this is, you don't have to do anything with this, but I have such an aversion to that yellow, because, you know, back in 1975 to '78, that yellow was like on every piece of linoleum that was anywhere to be found, and it really gives me, it's just like the creeps. So, I mean, I can't tell you to change the color, but it really, talk about...
So, I can tell you that we received a similar comment, and we studied this with great detail and actually toned down the yellow that was on this building at the request of the planning department. And the conversation initially was as to whether or not that yellow was correct. And the study that took place was, we took a look at kind of the material palette that was selected and went through quite literally every single color and, and looked at what is going to look the best, what, what is the best, most complementary color to the wood, to the, to the, the nature of the metal. And at the end of the day, you know, I, I gave the architect the direction to change the yellow. If the planning department wants you to change the yellow, change the yellow, I don't, make it red.
Yeah, I can't tell you that, right?
No, but I'm, but I'm just sharing, but I'm sharing with you that at the end of the day, the yellow carried the day with everybody because it did look the best. And, but it was dramatically toned down as well, so...
And I do want to make a comment. I think this is a very beautiful building. I love how it's articulated, and I think it's one of the better I've seen. So, I just, it's just my personal thing from growing up in the backwoods with the linoleum. Okay, that's all I have.
For the record, I, I like the yellow in the rendering, though admittedly, on the color board, it's a little brighter. Yellow's also my favorite color, though, so I'm not necessarily the best person to talk. Doesn't mean I want all the buildings yellow, but I actually, I actually like it on the rendering. Does that make sense, it's a little toned down on the rendering? I think it, but I do, I like the building, and normally I have a pretty decent aversion to some, some sort, to things that kind of jet up straight from the street, but for some reason, that I can't explain, I like it. I think maybe it's the, the use of materials and how that seems to be breaking it up for me. I do have one question, though. I'm curious, with the warehouses all being one story, I'm just curious why, why you guys didn't, I guess, maybe go two-story on some of the warehouses and...
Generally speaking, for lab space, you need a little bit more interstitial space to be able to run all of the HVAC and other sort of utilities that need to get to the benches. And so, it, in the same way in San Francisco, above the lab space, we, we only have a one-story environment, but then the office space can be multi-story because we don't have quite the same amount of utilities in HVAC.
That makes sense, thank you. That makes sense, thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant or the architect at this time? All right. Is there anyone here from the public who wishes to be heard on this item? Well, hello. How are you?
I'm good.
Why don't you come on up?
Didn't have time to fill us for the signature.
That's quite all right, I know who you are.
Hi, my name is Don Eaton. I would like to comment on this from a couple different perspectives. One, it's next door to where my office is, and so therefore, I am not going to be a NIMBY at all. I think it's a very nice project. I think it's an improvement over what's there. It goes toward where our town is headed in terms of the economics of how the town is going to function. You know, the biotech situation is only going to grow, and I think San Carlos needs to be a part of that. And having an incubator biotech situation in town with an established operator, if you will, is only a compliment to town, to our town and what's going to happen there. It's a good location. They worked out some access issues with some easements with the adjacent property, which is the one I meant. And that's fine, by the way. They're doing all their setbacks from the creek, as they should, and all that is fine, again. The yellow color, just for fun, you remember the building that used to be on the corner of Britton and, not Britton, Industrial, yeah, Britton and Industrial? And it used to be this pretty ugly old tilt-up gray thing that had some yellow accents on it before a certain party got hold of it and changed the whole look of it for the better and made it a lot more desirable. And that's not the reason I moved into it, but that's another story. But I do remember that the yellow faded a little bit, and I'm sure you've thought about that and what you can do to protect some of that, the brilliance of it, which helps to create a good, a faded yellow makes a building look tired. But other than that, you can always repaint it, so it's not a big deal. But I think it's a compliment to the things that should be happening in the industrial area, and it portends more for the future, so I would recommend that you approve it.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public? Right? Then are there any other questions for staff, or the applicant, or the architect, or anybody else before I entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
I mean, I have questions about TDM in general, but I think, I mean, we addressed it. I guess, I'll say this, I'm always a bit wary of TDM requirement reductions, especially when it's an office space, and then especially when we don't know the tenant who's going to occupy the office space. However, I think it's clear that they meet the requirements as they stand. But I will say, I am a bit hesitant about signing off on any potential future reductions, and maybe that's something where we can massage the wording to make that a little bit...
I mean, I can be convinced by staff if they want to try hard, but I don't, I mean, a comment was made about this being sort of a borderline space for a TDM. And a TDM is triggered at 10,000 square feet, and this is 23,000 square feet. So it's twice the size, two and a half times the size, as what's necessary to trigger a TDM. And then when you talk about, I mean, I'm not a scientist or a mathematician, but like, you know, the idea that a TDM is supposed to decrease the trips by 20%, and therefore, we should only require a TDM plan when it reaches 80% occupancy, that math just doesn't sound right to me, especially when you could need a TDM plan for a project that's half the size. So anyway, I can be convinced, but it depends on how important it is to the applicant and how hard the staff wants to work.
I can say that in my experience in San Francisco, and this did not come up with the staff, but I can say my experience in San Francisco is that once we've gone ahead and get this leased up, that it'll stay leased up. And so I don't have any sort of concern with that being changed in any sort of way that once we lease it up. And frankly, if you want to just pick a date that says that this starts getting implemented, perhaps, you know, a year from the time that we get the certificate of occupancy, I'm fine with that as well. If we want to just pick a hard date and just start that there. That's, again, my experience in San Francisco, was that it took us, I want to say, like, nine months or a year to get fully leased up. So if we want to just pick a date...
If it was a year from the certificate of occupancy, or 70% occupancy, whichever happens first, would you be cool with that?
Yes.
All right. Yep.
I think that's a good solution. Thank you for that. I think staff then would recommend that we just remove condition of approval number nine.
Yep.
And then alter condition approval number eight to reflect the language that was just discussed with the applicant and with the planning commission. I think that certainly achieves the intent of what staff was trying to implement with TDM and make sure that TDM is implemented in a reasonable fashion for all of our projects where it's required. So that certainly reflects our intent.
Thanks. And also, I'm a lawyer, so I have trust issues. When I look at the TDM and it references the transit passes, it doesn't specifically say that they'll be made available to all employees. Was that the intention?
Yeah, we're going to make this a requirement of all the companies to go ahead and put onto their employees.
Okay. I don't know where to put that.
Should we close public hearing?
Sure. Anyone want to make a motion to close the public hearing?
I motion to close public hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, there's a motion and a second. Can I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Harper-Petersen?
Yes.
Commissioner Bergman?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bradley?
Yes.
Chair Silverman?
Yes. Okay, so all I want to do is make those changes to, make the change to eight, delete nine, make the addition to 21 that staff has requested, and make the requirement of transit passes to all employees more explicit. And with that, I'm prepared to vote on a motion, but I don't want to inhibit any discussion. So anyone who wants to discuss?
Oh, I'm sorry. Probably my only final comment since TDM's on the brain is, and I know this has been tangentially brought up before, but I'd really like to see if our previous, speaking of trust issues around TDM, I'd really like to see if any of our previous TDM approvals are actually working. And I don't know if maybe there is an update by now on some of the TDM reports that have actually come into staff that could happen at a future presentation for the planning commission, so that we can see if these things we approve are actually making any difference at all.
Yes, Commissioner Harper-Petersen, staff is aware of the commission's interest in looking at how TDM plans, where they were required, how those are working. So we're putting together a list of those, kind of checking the timing on that, and when they're ready, we'll bring this forward.
Great, thank you. Sorry, Shannon, did I interrupt you?
No, I was just going to say, this is a good project. There's not a lot to, I mean, it's just very nice. It'll be a good addition to our city.
Anything you want to talk about, Mr. Bradley?
Just that I have a 40-year-old Corvette that's bright yellow like that.
Best color for a Corvette, by far.
It has faded. But actually, I like to subdued, shown on the rendering. I think it's bright enough, and it is a very handsome building. Congratulations on that.
I'm colorblind, it looks green to me, but it's fine. So, yeah, just a parting comment. I know that what we do here is not precedential. I do, you know, I would be more animated about the reduction in parking here if we weren't only talking about one space and if I didn't know about the 10 shared spaces and if it wasn't for the fact that I have a feeling they could get more parking if they needed from the adjacent property. Because I, you know, I otherwise would be pretty concerned about a reduction in parking based on the location relative to a bus stop. But that said, I'm not concerned about this particular project based on what I know. So with that, is the motion on the screen? It is. So whoever's going to make the motion, they do need, well, I mean, I guess I could do it. Does anyone want to try and muddle through a motion?
Not really.
All right.
Sorry, David. I was just close to saying yes, but no.
Yeah, all right. So I move that the planning commission approve the design review and transportation demand management plan associated with the proposed addition and site improvements at 930 Britton Avenue and the minor use permit for an off-site parking agreement between 930 Britton Avenue and 1030 Britton Avenue, based on the findings and for the reasons incorporated in the staff report and as conditioned in the code compliance certificate and minor use permit, with the additions that condition 21 be modified such that it be triggered by, and staff helped me, by the certificate of occupancy. Similarly, that eight be modified such that the TDM will be triggered either a year from the issuance of the certificate of occupancy or upon reaching 70% occupancy, whichever happens first, and that condition nine be eliminated in its entirety and the remaining conditions be renumbered consecutively.
Friendly amendment, I believe we wanted to clarify the employee...
Oh, thank you so much. And that in addition, that the, that condition eight be modified to reflect the fact that the provision of transit passes in the TDM be made explicit, that they are to be provided by the tenants to all employees. Thank you. With that, is there a second?
Second.
Nope.
I will recognize Mr. Bradley, and can I have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Harper-Petersen?
Yes.
Commissioner Bergman?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bradley?
Yes.
Chair Silverman?
Yes, congratulations. Moving on to item seven, reports on recent city council actions.
I don't have anything to report in regards to recent city council actions this evening.
All right. Moving on to item 7B, planning commission comments or reports. Nothing, nothing. Mr. Bradley, nothing. All right, moving on to 7C. I see that we have a letter on the day's dated, woken me stamped, received December 13th from David Pollock and Betty Pollock regarding a project that is not before the commission. I know that we've received some emails on the same subject again. As far as I know, there's not even a, not even an application related to this yet. But I would ask that in the event that an application is made, if you would notify me because I informed the applicants that I, excuse me, the homeowners, that I would endeavor to let them know if I found out about an application. Is there any other correspondence?
None other than what was on the dais this evening.
Thank you. Any planning staff comments, reports, and/or updates of current projects?
Yes, I just have a little update for the planning commission regarding the Single Family House Advisory Committee and the progress that is being made towards working with the Citizens Committee on Proposed Code Changes to the Single Family Residential Zoning District. The next meeting for the Shack will be this Wednesday, December 20th.
You guys are calling it the Shack?
The Shack, well, it's the acronym.
That is awesome.
So that committee will be meeting this Wednesday, which is December 20th, here at City Hall, 6:00 PM. This is a meeting that's open to the public. And one of the notable things about this meeting is that we've been working with this committee for quite some time, and we have reached a point where we have actually synthesized all of their comments and proposing some, what we feel are meaningful code changes to the committee for their consideration. So on this Wednesday, they will actually be asked to respond to these revisions and provide us with input. Once we get through that with the Shack and provided that they are, agree and comfortable with these proposed code changes, we would then take them out before a much broader audience and held a community open house and with a lot of public announcement and awareness when this open house will be, when it will be, and where it will be, and all the details for that. But the idea is to really share that with the broader community before we move on to study sessions with the planning commission and eventually proceed with formal hearings with the commission and then eventually to city council. So we're kind of at a good point. We're at a really good point, and we're, we'll see where this goes, but that meeting will be this Wednesday. And then just a couple of other administrative items. The next regularly scheduled meeting with the planning commission would be on Tuesday the 2nd, but that's the same day the staff comes back to City Hall after the furlough, which is December 25th. We're closed, and we won't be back until Tuesday the 2nd. So we're not having the RDRC or Planning Commission meeting on that night, and instead, we'll resume our regular duties on Tuesday, January 28th, excuse me, January 18th. So again, that's a Tuesday because the Monday prior is a holiday. And I believe one of the items that we have on the agenda is, could possibly be 1040 Laurel, which is a mixed-use development right on the 1,000 block of Laurel. And with that, I don't have any further reports or announcements, other than to wish everyone happy holidays and a happy new year. Another year has flown by.
Happy holidays and Merry Christmas, everybody.
Happy holidays. Meeting is adjourned.